Good afternoon. Of course, I had to make an entrance, so. Being the last time, here I am with everybody and Iris, there you are with me. So, this is the City Council Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Success Agency, our regular meeting, Thursday, December the first, is 1:00, and we are in session. And the flag salute. It's gonna be me, surprise, everybody.
Thank you. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving along, we're gonna have a roll call. Chrissy?
Councilmember Downs?
I'm here.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Councilmember Weil?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kite?
Here.
And Mayor Townsend?
I am here. Very good. As you can see, look what we have here. We have a great group of young professional entertainers who are going to be with us, and I'm gonna call to the stand Bryant McDonald, the band director, and he's gonna tell us a little bit about what's gonna happen. Hi, Bri.
Hi, it's December 1st, and we're here to bring you the Christmas spirit.
Good.
I know some people have different thoughts on that. We start before or after Thanksgiving. We start after Halloween. We wanna get ready, and so I dig these tunes. I hope you guys do. These kids are doing wonderful things. We can't be here in two weeks with you because they're all gonna be taking their finals. And so, we had to come a little early and bring you some Christmas joy. We'd like to congratulate the mayor on a wonderful term served, and we congratulate him on his upcoming retirement. That's fantastic. We had a couple of words where he said, "What's your plans?" He says, "I don't have any plans." That sounds wonderful. So, congratulations, sir. We wish you a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Bri.
Oh, nope. One, two, three. (music) We'd like to wish you guys all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Bri. Have a happy holiday, all you guys. Very good. Appreciate it. All right, next on our agenda is presentations by Rancho Mirage High School Performing Arts Program and Kelly Newhouse Performing Arts Chair. Kelly, where are you? There you are. Nice to see you again, Kelly.
Nice to see you again, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for inviting us back. I have a slightly smaller contingent this time, but again, just briefly, I have Xavier Brown, Mittel Valdez, Elsie Valdez, Leila Marquez, and Ziri Rodriguez Lopez. I always forget which one comes first.
Very good. They're all Broadway-bound, right?
Well, I hope so. That would be fun to see. So, these students all participated in our musical last year, which was Head Over Heels. They are all currently participating in our fall play called Gossip, and I'm hoping they will all audition for our spring musical Shrek, which is truly what brings us here today. We have a lot of things going on at Rancho Mirage, and it was fun to come in and see our band here. We went, "Oh, look, it's all Rancho, all day." Yay! But we do have a lot of wonderful things, and not only are these students behind me actors and performers, they are performers at all levels. Xavier is on our dance team at our school. Mittel and Elsie are also in our band. So, we, and one of the young ladies that was with us last time when we came to visit is in the choir. So, everybody does everything, and it's a lot of fun to say, "The primary reason we are here before you today is to say thank you." Oh, goodness gracious, I wasn't expecting that. We like to put on shows and musicals, and as if you may not be aware, musicals are incredibly expensive. And we have had in previous years the availability of the Galen Funds, which Helene Galen graciously provided the startup money for. But unfortunately, due to the volatile stock market of recent years, times, months, I don't know, that funding is sadly not available to us this year. And our -- I'm so sorry. I get a little tongue-tied. Yes, and I teach theater, which always just is confusing. But our spring musical this year is Shrek, which we are really, really excited about, and it is really, really expensive. And so, I wrote a letter, quite frankly, not expecting much because it's tight all over. And you all graciously, generously donated $7,500 to our program, which will allow us to simply do everything we need to do. It will allow us to get all the costumes we need. It will allow us to pay for performance tracks. It will allow us to just do what we need to do to be able to put on the very best musical that we possibly can. And from the bottom of my heart, I say thank you. From the students, we say thank you very, very much. And I would like to invite you all to come see what we're doing at Rancho Mirage High School. Tonight and tomorrow is our winter dance show. Next week on Tuesday is our band concert. Next week on Thursday is our choir concert. And the following weekend, the 16th, 17th, and 18th, will be our fall play called Gossip. Then next year, we start the whole thing over again. There will be choir concerts, there will be band concerts, and we will have two weekends of performances for Shrek, which will be March 17, 18, and 19, and then the following weekend, the 24th through the 26th. And there will be two tickets waiting for each of you if you would like to come join us. So, again, thank you so very much, and please come see what you're helping support.
Absolutely. Kelly, you have no idea what I had to go through to get them to approve the $7,500. I'm not gonna tell you now, but they agreed, so they're all here.
Well, whatever you did, good on you.
Very good, very good.
Thank you again.
Congratulations to all of you. Really appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right. Moving along, our council board comment reports, we're gonna change a little bit here, and we're going to put the council comments, we'll be moved to the agenda and would be heard at this time. And then we will call on the council members. Miss Smotrich first, then Mr. Me second, and then we will, if you hold all of your thank yous and accolades till after Iris and I are through, we would really appreciate it. So, with that, I am calling on our illustrious Ms. Iris Smotrich.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone. It is, needless to say, a joy to see everyone here, and it warms my heart, especially during this holiday season. So, through the years, people have always said, "Your schedule is always on overload. What did you do before the council? Did you actually have a life before the council? And how did you ever get into politics?" And of course, I always say, "I don't consider myself a politician. I am truly a public servant. I am not seeking higher office." And after doing business for over 60 years in so many cities with our property ownership and management, I have no doubt I would never do this job for any other city. But to sum it all up, I really led a fairy tale life. There were challenges, and there are few wicked witches along the way, but as my husband, Tom, always said, "It helps build character." And of course, I always said, "Thank you very much, but I think I have enough character." So, as I end this chapter of my life, I would like to show a few photos of my unusual history and how exactly I got here. I promise it will be fast, and I hope you won't be bored. So, to begin with, once upon a time, a little girl was born in the city named Chicago, and because her parents loved flowers, they named her Iris. And here I am, still a little toothless, but feeling very grateful with the name Iris because my parents also loved the names Petunias and Daffodils. So, at the age of three, my family moved to LA, and with two older brothers, I became a tomboy. But I also love girly things. I grew up in a modest home, graduated school, worked three jobs, and married my prince, Charming. After marriage, life became even busier, with additional work, raising a family, ice skating and skiing, until I was hit by a snowboarder and broke eight ribs, ending 28 amazing years of skiing. But not wanting to miss anything, I took up belly dancing, square dancing, round dancing, line dancing, and tap dancing. Needless to say, my toes became targets for other dancers, and Band-Aids became my new best friends. And when not mothering, dancing, or volunteering for charities, Tom and I enjoyed many years of travel adventures. In fact, we visited 96 countries until 9/11. And when that happened, it was an event that changed our lives completely. We stopped traveling, purchased a home in Rancho Mirage, and began my service on the board of the Rancho Mirage Library. And with on-the-job training, became more adept at speaking publicly. And with that new job, also came the enjoyment of many library events, including public safety. Okay. Public -- okay, a second. Public safety, and with our firemen, who you will see in another slide, and a variety of different events, including my favorite gingerbread house making. Let me go back a second. Okay. Then moving on, to serve five years on our cultural commission. You're getting a double dose of some of these. Okay. This is our public safety fireman who appeared at our library, and three little youngsters who I always enjoyed seeing at our library, and they happen to be Isaiah Hagerman's children. So, if you hadn't seen them before, now you have a chance to see them. Then moving on to serve five years on our cultural commission, I was thrilled helping to bring some wonderful events to the Coachella Valley, including Sergio Mendes, Lena Kazam, the four freshmen, and we even celebrated the end of World War II with boogie-woogie music, costumes, and dancing the evening away. Then, in 2011, I had the honor of being appointed to the City Council, and was then sworn into office for four years with our dear Gordon Moeller. It was even more special for me because I was the first female council member in nine years. My focus as a new council member became emergency preparedness, and with the help of wonderful staff members and a fabulous commission, we all immediately jumped into action with community outreach programs. Publicity for getting prepared was made fun with special events, and we were able to set a new pace by holding our race to be ready with Valley-wide participation. Other cities also joined with their own safety programs. Love this electronic stuff. Okay. And as a council member, welcoming new businesses was always a joy, especially the ones with yummy treats. The expansion of our Rancho Mirage Community Park provided fun for all, along with a new form of outdoor exercising. My finger is okay. Then a new adventure began when I became mayor for the first time. Reopening the long-awaited Rancho Mirage Ritz Carlton was a glorious event, especially with its new look and opportunities for celebrations, big and small, including dinners with Sheriff Chad and Denise Bianco, Chef Bruno, and General Manager Doug Watson. And with us, celebrating every special occasion at the beautiful hotel, our favorite phrase became, "We'll see you at the Ritz." Our annual art affair and giving the mayor's award for artistic elegance and excellence was another fun experience, as was sheltering under the mayor's desk during the Valley Shakeout event held every October. Getting under the desk was no problem, getting back up was a bit more challenging, and something the Desert Sun reporters found quite entertaining, along with my Grateful Dead t-shirt. Every week brought special celebrations, the launching of Rancho Mirage magazine, funding Eisenhower with a special gift, presenting proclamations to exceptional people and organizations was an honor, and was performing, as was performing, a wedding ceremony, and appearing in a featured article in the Desert Sun. Attending extraordinary events became a daily treat, especially the olive picking day at Sunnylands, and visiting their acclaimed totem pole. Gathering with unique ladies of Rancho Mirage and parting with the president of Eisenhower Health, so whether celebrating at our fire station, judging a competition at the Agua Caliente Casino, or wearing my cute birthday hat made by our city attorney, Steve Q, my days and evenings were always rewarding. But there were definite pinnacle celebrations, one of which was our famous ladies golf tournament, which began as the Craft Nabisco with its founder, Dinah Shore, and featured the always memorable Jump into Poppy's Pond. The ladies loved playing there, as did I in the Pro-Am tournament, and particularly enjoyed the Days End celebratory cigar with our then-city manager and Randy Binder. Meeting the president and seeing the beautiful Air Force One close-up was beyond remarkable, as was the incredible State of the City luncheon, A Galaxy of Stars, with over 500 guests in attendance. But by far, my most memorable and meaningful occasion was the Veterans' Day dedication of the Veterans' Wall of Remembrance and Eternal Flame at our Rancho Mirage Community Park. Having a profound attachment to our American soldiers was my greatest honor, and spearheading this monument was my greatest pleasure. Needless to say, Isaiah and our wonderful staff made it happen, but I must also thank Charlie for helping select the pedestal on that very hot summer day. And it is now a special attraction for our military and their families, and the messages of appreciation I receive are beyond touching. And as most of you know, Captain Ronald Meyercheck, who is recognized at the Palm Springs Air Museum, will always have a place in my heart. His name is engraved on the bracelet I wore for almost three years as a soldier missing in action. Tragically, he was killed in Vietnam when his plane was shot down. I am delighted to end my presentation with this slide because although I will greatly miss all the festive activities and the dedicated staff members with whom I have worked over the last 11 years, it is time to begin the next chapter of my life. Spending more time with family and friends and working on behalf of our veterans and the men and women in uniform will more than fill my plate. So, I congratulate the new council members. Unfortunately, because of previously scheduled business meetings in Los Angeles, I won't be able to attend their swearing-in ceremony next week, but know, it will be a meaningful event. And hopefully, their service on the council will provide similar opportunities that both Charlie and I both enjoyed. And I must say a special thank you to Lori O'Keefe, who always helped pull everything together. Many, many accomplishments were made during our tenure, too many to mention here, but they included two park expansions, the Dog Park, the Observatory, the Amphitheater, and there's much more to do. But if the decisions the new council members make are always made in accordance with what's best for the citizens and businesses of Rancho Mirage, they will never go wrong. Thank you so much for allowing me to be a part of your lives. Thank you for entrusting me to participate in the governance of one of California's finest cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris.
Now, I feel sorry for all the people that come here and have to work the clicker.
Now we know.
But thank you, staff, for taking over. Made it a lot easier.
Good, good, good.
Thank you.
Well, as you can imagine, after our relationship with Iris and the council, with Gordon and all that we have been together, there's many things that have overlapped in what Iris is talking about and I will be talking about, but they were just as great an opportunity for me and great remembrances. So with that, I will say that this moment right now that has come to me will only happen once. To those others who have faced this time in their lives and have moved on, my congratulations also. This time will come to others as well. Some with sadness in losing a race, or with wrestling with what time to know when to leave the stage and move on. Each of us will have that moment, and this is mine. So, many have asked me.
Including me.
Thank you. Why have you made this decision to retire? The answer is, life, along with new lessons, also to the vibes and challenges that are put in our path surely do show the way. It did for me. So, enter my decision to go on with the next chapter and retire as the mayor of Rancho Mirage. I didn't think I was gonna be able to do this, but forgive me. This leads me to say a lot of you have no idea who I am or what brought me to this moment in my life story. So, I will try and give you a small and hopefully quick look at Charles Townsend. I am sure there are those right now rolling their eyes with God enough with him. For them, I ask just for a few moments to bear with me. However, I will share with those who have the knowledge that one day it will be them to say goodbye. So, I will bore you with a picture prologue of my highlights that brought me here. So, who's ever doing the clicker, click away. This is me. We'll go to the second one, please. And this was me at the ABC Television Network in Chicago, where I was on a program every Sunday, singing my little heart out as known as Little Johnny Ray. On to Paramount Pictures, then to reprise records to work at the Frank Sinatra Company. Then my history in the attainment industry came to a close, and then I went into the Army, as so many people did at that time, believe it or not. Many of the people that were in my platoon never came back from Vietnam. Next, after that, I went to Copley Newspapers, and there I am with my office and my secretary. I started as a lonely salesperson, worked up to the advertising director in a 10-year career. Then from there, I went to the Los Angeles Times, 23 years, starting with managing downtown office and the national advertising office overseeing three districts that brought us, Gordon and me, down to the opening of our Los Angeles Times Desert Office for an addition in the wonderful city of Rancho Mirage. And this brought Gordon and me here to see how great everything is. From there, we decided to retire from his company and me from the LA Times after those 23 years at the ripe old age of 52. So, needless to say, we were very, very fortunate. From that brought us into moving to Rancho Mirage by our home, opening up the famous Charles Townsend Collection, not your ordinary furniture store, on 111, for over 20-some years. That brought us to being part of our Chamber of Commerce, which we started at the board, and then as vice president, and then as president, and then I was honored to be chosen as businessman of the year. And that would be the next slide. Look at those awards, heavy, heavy, carrying them all over the place, and I still take them with me everywhere I go. Next, from there, we were talked into and thinking about running for the City Council of Rancho Mirage, and this is a get-together party. Do I look like I'm excited, or afraid, or scared of what they want me to do? But we did. This was at Iris's in Tom's house, out on their beautiful pavilion. So, this started the group that put it all together. So, from there, we are running, and we have our next presentation will be, "I Won." And I'm looking at Dana Hobart like, "So, you didn't think I was gonna win, did you?" Uh-huh. That was that. And then that was the first surprise win. The second win was with the City Council, which we have here. And then from there, I was, I think, one of the most highlights, this is my second win, my biggest highlight was doing the State of the City, which was absolutely an amazing moment in my highlight of my life. And this is everybody that was there on the staff, and I didn't top Iris with this because Iris had a beautiful one when she did it, but that was our State of the City. Next, I think, on the slides is the park that Iris and I talked about. It was her idea. I just merely helped in finding a piece of marble, but this was her inspiration, and I owe that to you, my dear. Next, we're gonna go into So from there, we are running, and we have our next presentation will be, I won. And I'm looking at Dana Hobart like, so you didn't think I was gonna win, did you? That was that. And then that was the first surprise win. The second win was with the city council, which we have here. And then from there, I was, I think, one of the most highlights, this is my second win, my biggest highlight was doing the State of the City, which was absolutely an amazing moment in my highlight of my life. And this is everybody that was there on the staff. And I didn't, I didn't top Iris with this, because Iris had a beautiful one when she did it. But that was our State of the City. Next, I think, on the slides is the park that Iris and I talked about. It was her idea. I just merely helped in finding a piece of marble, but this was her inspiration, and I owe that to you, my dear. Next, we're gonna go into, here we go into ribbon cutting, shovels, groundbreaking. So the first one is the, I believe, the amphitheater, which I was there to be part of this. And again, there are so many parts that we were a part of with this council, of great things that are really close to, I know, my heart, and I know everybody else within the council at that time, very proud of it. It was like almost a turning point in Rancho Mirage, all these things were coming on board. The next one is the Dog Park. Here we are, isn't that, isn't that a great-looking group? And there we are at our Dog Park. Next one was the Observatory. Let me just tell you, the Observatory, we had, and this was Dana Hobart's idea to bring this forward, and you have no idea if anybody was around here remembering the backlash that this city went through in this council, of ridicule, and are you all losing your mind, and you should all be taken off of the council, et cetera, et cetera. Well, for those of you to know today, that's one of the most successful ventures that we have in Rancho Mirage. You can't even get a ticket to go in there and see all the shows and everything, how this, actually, it's become a sensation in the, in the state of California. It is, is that great? And I'm very happy to have been a part of that and putting that together. Next one is Cortino. Everybody know about Cortino? And there we are with our shovels in the ground and doing our groundbreaking ceremony. Wonderful, what a wonderful event, what a wonderful thing to know, that in years to come, to drive by that and know that we were all there to be part of this amazing, amazing project. This will be worldwide and put Rancho Mirage again on the worldwide stage, not only as the city of the presidents, but of Cortino. And then the next slide is, this is the group with the imaginaries that work and put this together. They came in and had a nice chat in the office as, as they were explaining again after the program going on and what the benefits will be. So that's the Cortino Group. Those are the brains behind it all. And the next one, this, believe it or not, was the Taste of Tahiti. And they came to us through the Chamber of Commerce, and they selected the city of Rancho Mirage to be the host city for them promoting Tahiti. And they came in and did this fabulous program, which is next slide. There it is. And it was breathtaking. And to think that they picked Rancho Mirage as the host city for this is another outstanding memory for me and all those that were a part of it. The next slide will be Holidays, Party Time. We were not shy, guys. We were, we were out there all the times with many dinners, many events after, for dinners, homes. It was a, it was an amazing, amazing time, and I am so grateful that I was a part of this warmth that everybody had and felt, and I'm sure that will still continue on. So that is that, and I think that is my goodbye time for that. And I'm going to do some closing, few words to end my thing up. By the way, that's, that's my, my love, Robert. We've been together 10 years. Great, great person to have in my life, takes such good care of me. So now, you see that many different paths of lives come to people that sit on this council. Mine and Gordon's, 43 years together, came to Rancho Mirage, starting with our home here, then our business, then the Chamber of Commerce, then to the council, all connected by chance, or was it by a higher power? It was a wonderful part of our lives to give back to this city that welcomed two gay men into their arms with trust and open minds. Yes, you elected us to serve on behalf of your community and families, a commitment that we took to our hearts to serve, to have been a part of this most forward council and Chamber of Commerce for the last 20-plus years, which set the tone for the growth and development you all see here today. This council came together to achieve a working relationship prevailed through many, many challenges. I know there is more work to be done in this new council and the others that will follow. Them in the near future will hopefully have the same outlooks, not for themselves, but for the honor to serve Rancho Mirage, the legacy for the future. My best wishes to the new council. Mayor Richard, Mayor Pro Tem Steve, new council member Lynn, and new council member Meg. My thanks to the staff that held my hand and made me look good when I was not, to the city managers I worked with through my tenure, past and present, to my fellow council members that had the patience and let me be me, even when it hurt. My fond good memories will always be there in my heart. Thank you all for listening, and I'm sorry. Well, good plans of mice and men, and you can see it didn't work. And I've read it through many times, it didn't shed a tear, blink an eye. But thank, thank you again, everybody. Now we're gonna turn it over to council comments, and I'm gonna start with Mr. Mayor to be, Richard Kite.
Thank you, Charlie. Mayor Townsend, and dear Iris, this is a bittersweet day today. I was so excited when you both were elected to the office of city council, city of Rancho Mirage, and was looking forward to your input and your expertise. I can honestly say you have both exceeded of your combined efforts, and above and beyond the city of Rancho Mirage has benefited. The citizens made a wise decision, putting you on the city council. Rancho Mirage will never be, will be grateful in the future for everything you have accomplished, and more to come. Iris and Tom, I know you're gonna remain in the community and look forward to being friends and seeing you at the various events in the future. You have some large shoes to fill, but I'm sure that the incoming council will look at the past and will benefit from that. Really thank you for all the work you guys have done, and all I can say is thank you both, and you'll be long remembered in the city of Rancho Mirage. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard, I appreciate that. Mr. Steve, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Charlie, and thank you, Charlie and Iris, for your many, many years of service to this city. If, if my notes are correct, Iris was elected in, I'm sorry, Iris was appointed on July 7th of 2011, so over 11 years of service to this city, and many more years prior to that on various commissions and other parts of, other issues in the city of Rancho Mirage. And Charlie, again, if I'm correct, you were elected in April of 2014, so more than eight years of service to this city. And again, as you pointed out in your comments, many years prior to that, with Gordon, and also as president of the chamber and service in the chamber. So thank you for those many years. Now, for me personally, I will always be mindful of the role the two of you played in my sitting here on this council today. So Charlie, it was you who almost four years ago appointed me to serve in the planning commission, and had you not done that, I wouldn't be sitting in this chair today. So I appreciate that very much. And Iris and Charlie, it was the two of you who, a year ago this month, voted yes to appoint me to serve on this council. So I will always be mindful of the role you have played in my service to the city, and I thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Steve. We appreciate it. And couldn't do better because you were the best choice. What more could we do but to appoint you? You're doing a great job, really, really mean that. Ted?
Thank you, Charlie. I too want to thank you and Iris for the time and service that you have spent dedicating yourselves to the city, Charlie, for your eight years on the council and your last seven months as mayor. We indeed appreciate it, and Iris, your 11 years on the council as well. You have worked tirelessly to make this city so much better. This has been a very unusual period, because for the first time in many decades, three seats on this council became available. In essence, it was a majority that changed hands during this past election. And of course, Iris and Charlie making a decision not to run for reelection created a opportunity for our new members to become elected. And again, two new people, both ladies, that I'm sure will do an excellent job. The third seat that became available was a result of Dana Hobart making a decision to retire. And it goes without saying that Dana's contributions to this council were enormous. Dana is the one that decided, no, when the redevelopment agency funds were available, we weren't gonna do what other cities had done to either build golf courses or an aquatic center. We would use those funds to underground the utilities in our city and preserve the view corridors. Just a magnificent decision that saved our residents enormous monies. And in addition, as Charlie mentioned before, Dana was also the architect and creator of the observatory. So that being said, the three people that have left and are leaving this council, Charlie, Iris, and Dana, I thank you for your time, effort, and contributions, and wish you nothing but the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Any other comments from anybody? Who are you?
Well, I consider myself a very lucky individual. The reason I'm lucky is I get the privilege of working for a fantastic city and great people like you. Iris and Charlie, tough day to reflect on all the accomplishments that you guys have for this city. I have a unique perspective, being the city manager, as I get to work with you the closest, and it's just been a total privilege to be able to soak up the knowledge and the time with you guys. You know, what a lot of people see are some of the photos you showed today with the ribbon cuttings and the end result, but sometimes what the public misses is the hard work, the thought, the sleepless nights, the countless hours reviewing material, doing site visits to make sure that that end product is the best. And being able to work for a city with council members like you makes it extremely easy from a staff perspective, because your viewpoint is what is best for the city. And because of your guys' leadership, Rancho Mirage is the way it is. And you can look around all of our community, and you can see each one of you and the impact that you've had on it. And I just can't thank you guys enough for fostering an environment and, in a leadership role, that really sends a message all the way through the organization that we expect the best and we will do the best. And that really starts with you guys and the rest of the council. You know, I can drive around this community and, and see some pretty special things and just little touches that maybe some people might miss, but each one of those things can be associated with you. You know, Charlie, you mentioned the observatory, and you guys did receive some criticism for that. And really, what you built was an extremely successful educational opportunity that is relevant for all age groups, the young and the young at heart. And at the time, you know, people could criticize that because it wasn't built yet, or it wasn't in operation yet, but I think looking back now, just in a short number of, you know, five years, now you see the amount of school kids that are taking field trips to this facility, the amount of events we're doing. You know, Charlie, you were on the observatory subcommittee, and we had no idea what we were doing, other than we had a goal. And, you know, as a subcommittee, you know, you guys had a vision, but implementing that vision took so much work and effort, field trips, talking to experts, doing the study sessions, and your colleagues supporting you guys, you know. And I think that's sometimes what the public can miss, is just how hard you guys work. And it's difficult when you're trying to do what's best for the community and you have people, you know, from their perspectives questioning those motives sometimes, but I can say from my perspective, I truly appreciate working for you. You've made it so easy from a staff perspective to just get things done, because your viewpoint is always what's best for the city of Rancho Mirage. And Iris, I always appreciated your, your touch of elegance and grace that you brought to it. You always had a different perspective, and a lot of times, it was details that some people may miss, but it definitely made the product better. And I think your viewpoint, and especially a woman's touch on things, you can see all over our community. You know, one, one thing that you showed in your slideshow was your tireless work for the EPC, Emergency Preparedness Commission. And I see a lot of our commissioners here in the audience, I'm sure, that are gonna come up and speak, because there were countless commission meetings, events. You know, you lived and breathed this, as you did too, Charlie. And the exercise circuit that you showed on your slideshow in our Rancho Mirage Community Park, we wouldn't have that exercise circuit without Iris. Iris, that was your idea. The Veterans Memorial was another one, a very special thing, especially given our community. We do have a lot of veterans in here and on this council, as you served mayor. And so, you know, I'll always enjoy some of those private moments that we had together. And you guys, you know, the weight that you carry with your decisions, you never took that lightly, and you always took it from a perspective of what's best for the city, and that has definitely shown in our community. So just from me, I want to thank you guys for everything that, you know, even just spending time with me and helping me and challenging me and staff, you know. One of the things that's always impressed me with the city is, we have some very successful people that live here that are maybe retired now, and you see it across our commissions, but you definitely see it on this council. And for someone who's still in the middle of their career, to be able to work and kind of soak in that knowledge that you guys bring to it, has just been a real joy, and I'll always treasure those moments. And, you know, there's gonna be a lot of things that I miss, but I'm also very happy for you guys, because I know this is not an easy endeavor, and I know it, because when you do it right, there is a weight to it. And you guys always, always stepped up, even when it was tough. You know, you mentioned the Ritz-Carlton. You know, you mentioned the Ritz-Carlton, and we wouldn't have a Ritz-Carlton if it was not for this council. And you guys, again, you took some concerns during that process, but you did it in a thoughtful way where the city was protected. And now we have a resort that is generating significant money for the city, and that enhances the quality of life that you guys provide to the residents. And so, you know, I also want to take a second and acknowledge the spouses, you know, Tom and Robert. You guys carry that probably the most deeply with them, and you guys are there at events and functions, but you're also there in the evenings and the sleepless nights when things are tough and things are hard. So thank you guys for the support that you provided to them, and it really was, is a great team to be a part of. And, you know, I just, I just want to thank you guys. Charlie, you know, the work that you did with the amphitheater, bringing in Desert Theatricals, who has just done a fantastic job. I see Josh and Ray here today as well. You really challenged us as staff to step up and provide a better product for the community in that area as well. So I always enjoy, you know, looking around the community and seeing those things. And so you guys have so much to be proud of, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be your city manager and to be able to work with you guys and learn with you guys. So thank you.
Thank you, Iris. Needless to say, it was a pleasure of working with you through the many years. You were always there to listen to all of us about different issues, and you always looked at both sides of everything. And we all made the right decisions together from your counseling, and I certainly appreciate it. Steve?
Yeah, I was surprised that we got these goodbyes today. I think it's always, in this business, it's very bittersweet when you get the opportunity to work with people like these two here, and they decide to move on. Now, with Iris, I just want to say that Iris is one of the most gracious people I've met, and her and her husband are some of the most generous people I've met. They're kind. They are, you know, they care about people. They care about people who are less fortunate, you know. And I really, really appreciated working with Iris all this time. In fact, before Iris got on this council, I kind of observed her from attending meetings out there, including in other places. And I always thought, wow, some city would be really lucky to have this woman on the council. And then I find out, oh my gosh, she lives in Rancho Mirage. So I was excited when I, you know, when I learned that other people have taken notice of that and wanted to bring her on this council. So Iris, I just want to thank you for everything you've done for the city, everything you've been done for me. You two are the most wonderful people, people I've met, and I know that you leave a legacy here of kindness and generosity. And I imagine that you will continue doing that as long as you can. So I'm just very, very, very grateful for the city of Rancho Mirage and for myself for having the opportunity to be a part of your life, even in this context. So thank you. Charlie, you know, there's a lot of things I can say about Charlie.
Really? Keep it clean.
And they're all good, but Charlie has also, he's also a very generous person. And one of the things that's very unique about these positions that these folks up here fill is that they're basically doing this job for nothing, other than the opportunity to give back to their communities. That is just incredible, and it's very impressive. They are the epitome of what a trusted public servant should be. And Charlie, you have gone, you know, this has been a big challenge for you, you know, just not too long ago, somebody like you sitting on a council in anywhere in the United States would be a challenge. And so I think you've, you know, you've met that challenge, and you've become a role model for a lot of people, including myself. And I will always look up to you because you have been tenacious about doing what you believe is right for this city. You have, you know, you have displayed a level of honesty and dignity that anybody would look up to. And I also think that you've been very, you know, generous and forthright about what you think is good for the city, and I've always appreciated that. And I know that you have been confronted with a lot of challenges out there simply because of who you are. But I think that once people have come to know you and see what you do, they've realized that you are truly a good person, and government is very lucky to have you have an interest in serving the government. So you are, you're going to be missed by me and I'm sure by a lot of other people. But again, like Iris and Tommy, I suspect that you and Robert will continue to be involved with the city and watch out for the best interests of the city. So hopefully, I'll be seeing both of you.
You will.
More of a social setting.
None of you are going to get rid of us. I'm just telling you that right now. You know, one of the things that you said, if I may dovetail upon it, yes, I'm the third gay person to sit on this council and be elected by the residents of Rancho Mirage. It didn't come easy. I had death threats to me. I'd have the police follow me home back and forth for a while. I was screamed at in restaurants. But it strengthened me to be in the footsteps of the other two gay people, gay men, who sat on this council. And I certainly hope that it strengthened me, it strengthened the cause of where we are today, to have the opportunity to be married legally and have that wonderful opportunity. There were times in my life and my career where everything had to be behind closed doors and out of fright. And the thing that I think of today is these young girls and boys today who are gay, lesbian, transgender, have no idea what a lot that has gone before them with my generation to bring them where they are today. And I certainly do, I remember Gordon saying, when Dana came to him and said, I think you should run for city council. And Dana said to Gordon, we really want you to do this. And he said, but Dana, I'm gay. And Dana's answer was, what does that got to do with anything? You're dealing with the residents of Rancho Mirage, and they are, I can't believe that they're that type that would never go against you. So he ran, he won, and that's how this cycle became. We're, I'm the last one on here now, but I'm sure in the future, there's somebody out there. Don't be ashamed, don't be afraid. Don't, don't look at me as weeping Willie here, but you can do it too. So I thank you for that. And Steve, thank you for those kind words. Thank you. That is, anybody else? Then I want to thank you all. Iris and I are just delighted. We have been so, so close all this time. Anyway, moving on with that part, we are going to now go to non-agenda public comments as an opportunity for the public to speak on the issues that are not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker, unless if you're talking about me, you can go to six. So Chrissy, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. So for, this is the time for comments on items not on the agenda. If you are participating remotely, please press star nine on your phone or press raise hand on Zoom. And we'll first go to the speaker card. So we have Bob Brown and Mary Lou Suter.
I think you should speak first, Mary Lou. You've been here certainly the longest on the commission and have done the most of anybody along with Marcia Stein, so go ahead.
Well, I'm not used to being first because Bob is the Chair of the Commission, so he should be first, don't you think? Oh, well, just go ahead. We won't, we won't waste your precious time. We're here to offer our sincere thanks. Public service is so often left unthanked and criticized, where it should be praised and thanked. So we have, I have a heart full of gratitude for each and every one of you and for all that you do, both having to do with the emergency preparedness in our commission, but just overall for the city of Rancho Mirage. You're remarkable people, and I've gotten to know our new council member, Steve Downs, a little bit. And looking toward the future, if our other two incoming council members are like Steve in any way, shape, or form, we're set for a number of very, very good years ahead of us. So I'm very, very happy to be here. I'm especially grateful for all of the council members who would attend our commission meetings, just drop in casually or just see us in public somewhere and greet us and say hello. All those things are very supportive and very meaningful, that you recognize the work the commission does and support that and verbally speak to us and attend those meetings and offer advice. Now Iris has devoted excessive days and months and years and run herself ragged. At the times she's run around the community park handing out brochures, I think is probably the most memorable experience, to tackle people if they weren't going to come by our table and pick up our brochure, we're going to take it to them. So be sure they have this message before they leave the park today. So she was on her way. I would go around handing out brochures, and they'd say, oh, that other nice lady already gave me the brochures. So, but just really the compassion that you have for the people here who really need services that are provided by a city. And the, just the willingness to devote of yourselves, of your time, is remarkable. It's wonderful. And I'm especially grateful again for Iris and her contributions to our commission. You've been so supportive, Iris. You've been generous with your time and your energy and your leadership. And you've always led us by example and encouraged us along the way, and we're grateful for it. So, and then Bob has a few words to say as well. So thank you, one and all, and especially best of luck to the two of you, Charlie and Iris, in your retirement.
Well said, Mary Lou. Well, Iris, here in the coveted Rancho Mirage Emergency Preparedness bag, we have something for you. We thought, well, maybe I should get her a nut bowl, but then I thought, well, no, Tom probably's got enough nut bowls at home. So we thought that we might get you an engraved fire extinguisher. And it says, hold your applause, please. It says, "In appreciation to Lady Iris from the Rancho Mirage Emergency Preparedness Commission and today's date, December 1st, 1922." What? 1922? No. And you know what? Mary Lou is humble and a gracious person, and she put this together before you, and then she says, no, I don't want you to read it, but being a copywriter, I think it's so well done. I just want to read this real quick, and I'll do, ready, read fast. For just a moment, let's take a serious look at why this fire extinguisher is an appropriate way to honor council members' poetry. We learn from the experts how to use these fire extinguishers. The acronym for the process is PASS. Pull a pin, aim at the base of the fire, squeeze the handle, and sweep back and forth along the base of the fire. PASS. To those of us serving on the EPC, the acronym also relates to Iris Smotrich's participation on and support for our commission. P stands for Persistence. Iris attended, Iris attended our meetings in person and via Zoom. Since the commission was formed, she modeled the quality of persistence, never giving up on a good idea. A stands for Appreciation. Iris demonstrated the characteristic of appreciation and always led our focus to what we achieved and the possibilities of what could be next. Straightforward stands for S. Iris modeled the beauty and utility of being straightforward in her approach to problem-solving and planning. And S stands for Sincerity. Because of Iris's sincerity and by using herself as an example, there is no doubt Iris encouraged and supported this commission. Over the years, she has also brought the message of emergency preparedness directly to hundreds upon hundreds of Rancho Mirage residents and so many others from across the Coachella Valley and beyond. Thank you, Iris. We hope you will stop in to visit us when you're able. Isn't that lovely? How about a nice hand for Mary Lou? Well done, Mary Lou. And now it's the ceremonial presentation of the fireworks. Here, we've got one more commission meeting here. There you go, Iris. Congratulations. And the coveted bag to keep it there, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And I think we're done, right? And then for extending the applause. Thank you very much. How about a nice hand for Iris Smotrich, ladies and gentlemen?
Mary Lou, Mary Lou is representing the city of Rancho Mirage in the spring event for seniors, so congratulations on that. She'll be with the other people, retired people from the other cities in the area. Good work, Mary Lou.
Next speaker, yes, next speaker is Wally Melendez.
Hi, everybody. I'm Wally Melendez. How are you? Congratulations. Good afternoon, City Council and Administration, city of Rancho Mirage. We have done nothing. Nobody has picked up a phone or mailed an email to the CAFCP in Sacramento. A state agency, the state government. We are the government here of a small jurisdiction. So we have something in common. We are the same organization, the state of California. When are we going to clean the air? I come here not just to jack my jaws or to pat myself on my own back. I come here because there is an issue that we need to clean the air by eliminating, by reducing the amount of gasoline-burning vehicles, which is a well-known fact throughout the world, that that, those emissions have created a climate change in the world, on the earth. Just the other day, I was reading where, where a big chunk of the ice cap on Antarctica broke off. A very large, my, my clock doesn't work, Charlie. My clock's not working.
You're doing, you're doing good. Just a few, few more, and we'll cut it off, but you're doing just fine.
Okay. My clock's not working. Anyway, so, 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 so I, so I'm proposing that you, you people, that, 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 that you agendize my proposal to install a hydrogen fuel cell charging station for cars. The state, the CAFCP, will pay half of that, which the city, which is so rich, should $500,000 just $500,000 just to pocket change. So yes, let's get with it. Let's do something. Let's not just do nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Wally. Your dedication is wonderful. Thank you. Kristi?
Mr. Mayor, before you move to the next speaker, just as a reminder for the Council, so every city meter, and there's about 170 of them in our community, so that's the medians, that's city facilities, streetlights, things like that. Every city meter, all 170 of them, have been on 100% renewable energy since 2018, and that's something that the Council did through the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority. And so the city charging stations that are here and at our library, they're charging with 100% renewable energy, so.
Very good. Thank you for clarification on that. I don't think Wally heard that, but I'm sure he will, he will get the message. Thank you. Kristi?
I have no more speaker cards. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Okay, come on up. Please state your name.
Hi, Cindy.
Hi. Thank you so much. My name is Cindy Burrisson, and I'm the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert CEO. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank both of you so much. I've been in this role for two years almost exactly, and I came in as a brand new CEO of this amazing beloved treasure in the city. And both of you have been so kind to me and so supportive, both personally, professionally. And I really wanted to thank you both for everything that you've brought to Council. I remember when Katie and I met with the two of you to discuss the vision of the museum, and I was really nervous, and you were both so graceful and kind and, again, so supportive through this whole thing, and I appreciate it immensely. And I promise to make you both proud with the museum and our reopening next year and all of the endeavors. So thank you for all you've done for our city, but particularly for myself and the museum. Thank you so much.
Well, I remember that meeting, and Iris and I said after we were through, oh, it's a cakewalk, you'll have no trouble at all, but you're doing a great job, and yes, we will be there.
Thank you both so much.
And Cindy, you'll be happy to hear that both Charlie and Iris selected the Children's Discovery Museum for their outgoing Council gifts. So a check's going to be coming in their name.
There you go.
And now you can be volunteers.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Come on up, please. We know who you are, but please state your name.
Hi, I'm Josh Carr.
I'm Ray Lamone.
We're Desert Theatricals here in Rancho Mirage. We just wanted to take a quick moment to, to recognize both Iris and Charlie. Iris has always been there and Tom, supporting the shows and, and what we do and just always present. We really appreciate that. Charlie, for bringing us on board when we got out here in 2017 thinking we were going to retire. And somehow, a year later, we're standing before the Council pitching its season.
If I were working, you were going to work.
So yeah, with Charlie's vision on that and bringing us in to, to the city to start Desert Theatricals and, and create the, the world that we have now of programming at the amphitheater, it's also led to the relationship with the Library and Observatory Foundation and the Richard Brook Foundation for promoting arts. So we just want to thank Iris and Charlie both for supporting the arts and the community. It's such an important aspect and the education that comes along with it with these well over 150 kids who have been working in the youth program with us since that shows, shows that, that something's happening right. And the facility's beautiful. We're looking forward to the upgrades, but thanks to Charlie and Iris for bringing us in.
Very much, thank you.
Let me just tell you, you guys breathed life into that amphitheater, and there's so much that's going to be going on now, right, Gabe? A lot of good things coming on, on the, I keep going at that and I can't tell what's going on, but there's, there's big, big, big improvements that are going to be there. And I am so proud of the two of you that I always had the confidence in both of you to bring you forward to the city because I knew you were going to do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Very proud of you.
Thank you. Well, thanks to you two and to the whole Council and Isaiah and Gabe and Haley and everyone else we work with. We appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Okay.
I'm going to go right down to here.
I'm just going to be a placeholder because Katie Stice is in the parking lot, so she wants to say something. So she is here right now, so I'm just going to be a placeholder, and I'll just take the opportunity to thank you again and.
Well, Cindy, I can sing a few parts of, you know, "All I Want for Christmas," if that'll help.
"All I Want for Christmas" is my two front teeth. And here's Katie.
You're, you're up, Katie. Welcome.
Yeah, always making an entrance. Always an entrance.
Sorry I wasn't here earlier. Hello.
How are you?
So, when I found out you were saying goodbyes today, it was really important that I come down here to share, share thanks with both of you, really for everyone, but we're really going to miss you. So it's a pleasure to be able to share that we are exceeding all of our goals at the Chamber of Commerce. It is such an exciting time. It's so exciting to be a part of this time. And you all are so nice to me and you give me so much credit, and we all know that it's never one person, right? It's never one person that's doing it all, but thank you for treating me that way. But the truth of the matter is, it's our city that has such a huge piece in that success, and we can't thank you enough. And Charlie, for you to step up as Chair of the Board and even interim at one point, I mean, that is a huge piece of leadership that this chamber needed to see the success that we're seeing today. So thank you for that. And Iris, I'm going to miss our lunches, and so I hope we can continue to have them where we talk about the significance of our nonprofit organizations and what they mean to our community, and we connect about things like organizational management and boards and all of those things. And so thank you for that. That's really important to me, to this community and to the Chamber of Commerce. And so just wanted to say thank you so much for who you are and what you do and for personally and professionally, you know, you've supported me, so thank you for that.
Well, let me just tell you that, being, being a part of it for so many years back, to see it come to where you have brought it, you're just like Ray and Josh, you have breathed life into that chamber that I don't think anybody ever thought could be done, but it took you to do it. And I'll just tell you this, you're not getting rid of Iris anymore. You ain't getting rid of us.
Good. We have, we have plans to have a, a past Chairs Committee, so we'll invite you to be a part of that, and we would like you to see our strategic plans as we're moving forward to make sure we're continuing to progress, but really also honoring the history and, and our past and who we are, keeping that. So thank you so much for your nice words.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Congratulations to you.
And Iris, I hope we can continue to have lunches. Sounds great. Thank you all.
I never miss a meal.
Good, good.
And it'd be my pleasure to continue our conversations. And as Charlie said, you have done what no one else could have done. And we recognize it. I think our city recognizes it. All of our businesses inside Rancho Mirage and without, they recognize what you have done. And you've set the example that no one else can exceed, and we are just so thrilled that you chose Rancho Mirage to give your services.
Thank you.
We thank you again.
Well, you know, it's really nice when you have this brand of leadership to look up to and to work with, you know? It's, you set a good standard for leadership, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Okay, see no one, and there's no one on Zoom either, so that was the last speaker.
Very good. Then we'll close this portion of the meeting, and we're going to turn it over to the consent calendar to our city manager, who will present and handle the public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. You have five items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to approve the November 17th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Item number two is to approve the five-year development impact fee report. Item number three is to approve the calendar year 2023 salary schedule. Item number four is to approve contracts. Item number five, our demands. And before we go to Council comments or questions, if any member of the public wishes to speak on one of these five items, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would use the raised hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Kristi?
I do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on the consent calendar? Seeing no one and no one on Zoom.
Very good. At that point, then, I'm turning it over to any Council comments.
I have a question.
Yes.
No question.
No, not today.
Just a quick question. On the development impact fee report, page 2-8, I'm guessing that red should have been a black under bus shelters, so total change in fund balances, $14,017. Fund balances at the beginning of the year, it shows red, $134,839. How did that work?
Let me get there.
Boy, you had a real good question. Hang, hang on.
Well, the bottom of the fund balance indicates that there's a positive $148,97.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a color issue.
Okay. That's what I assumed, just wanted to check.
It's Christmas, so we wanted to make it red.
There you go.
Any other comments? All right. Seeing none.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Very good. Please vote.
Motion carries for one with Mayor Pro Tim Kite voting no. Was, is that accurate? Or should we try that one more time?
I think that's wrong. Can I change my vote?
Okay, hold on one second.
He's a real stickler.
Okay, can we enter this one more time?
I couldn't get the, the area around my water close enough to the.
It's my fault. Okay, let's go one more time.
Glad we convinced you otherwise, Richard.
Yeah, Richard got it right this time. I was, I was looking.
Okay, so we still need the mayor's vote?
Vote.
Okay. Let's see what this does. Okay, motion carries, 5-0.
Watch out for those mayors.
Be careful, these mayors, the incoming and the outgoing. Are we good? Very good. Last item is reports and information item, and I'm going to turn this over to Gabe Cottin, Marketing Director, to present video and handle commission award.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations. You guys will both be missed, and I've enjoyed just the personal and the professional support from you always. Your, your graciousness in this community is unmatched, so I'm definitely going to miss working with you both. But I am delighted, Mr. Mayor, for one of your last acts as mayor.
Yes.
We're very excited. So I'm here today, you know, the Art Affair, now the Festival of the Arts, has been a close to a 20-year event. And so when I came on in 2019, we had hired Haley Tice, who came in July, and I said, good news and bad news. Good news, you have the job. Bad news, you have to produce an art festival in five months and there's no playbook. So good luck and Godspeed. And to her credit, she worked tirelessly, dug up all the research, because it really wasn't, when you have an event, that legacy event, everybody just kind of keeps it up here. They don't, you know, it just wasn't written. And so to her credit, we produced the event, and Haley immediately went to work on like how to improve it. And we went, we both kind of said, you know what? There's probably some improvements to make this kind of best-in-class and make, make it match Rancho Mirage's brand. And so I want to, even though she hates the limelight, I really want to acknowledge Haley because in the years during the pandemic and all the other things that our team was required to do, she always kind of had a vision for how she would execute this. And so I, I really let her run with that. And so those of you that attended it, you know, saw it. Those of you that don't, we have a great little video that Kai put together. So I'd like to run that video of the recap of the 2022 Rancho Mirage Festival of the Arts.
This concept is the talk of the valley right now.
The Rancho Mirage Festival of the Arts has a new creative direction, free for all involved. Thousands of people attended this two-day event at the Rancho Mirage Community Park.
It's a bit more special than being in the middle of a busy city. You're out in an oasis.
From painters to glass shapers, sculptors to bead makers. Dozens of artists from across the country were displaying their skills.
Lampworking is what it's called.
And also inspiring the next generation of artists.
They've been super nice and complimentary about her pursuing art and giving her tips, and so I think it's been a great experience, especially for the kids.
Rancho Mirage city leaders upgraded this event's concept.
Well, here you are in Rancho Mirage.
So that it's no longer sales-driven. Instead, the focus is having artists more easily connect with their audience.
It's really cool. I think they're, they're kind of going above and beyond what some of the other art festivals are doing.
Also on tap, local food vendors, serving up all kinds of tasty eats.
It's amazing. It's such a great way to get the community together, for us to showcase a little bit about our restaurant, and just to meet and hang out with the people of Rancho Mirage.
And growing their brand, one bite at a time.
The city of Rancho Mirage has contributed to our business like nobody else has. We could not be more grateful.
As the lights went down on day one, the Amanda Castro Band lit up the stage at the Rancho Mirage Amphitheater, dazzling the local audience with a world-class performance. An inspiring movement through the power of music. From the music stage to the outdoor art studio. This entire art experience was paid for by Rancho Mirage city leaders.
The city of Rancho Mirage is awesome. Very, totally awesome.
No entry fees and no commissions on sales means artists can now create a deeper connection with attendees.
He smashes it to bits.
With the future of this event now reimagined, the Rancho Mirage Festival of the Arts is embracing its new creative direction, free for all involved.
The city of Rancho Mirage leaders had the guts to do something like this, something totally different than they were used to. And they saw the vision. You know, when you're a visionary, every now and then you say, oh, yes, this is what we should do. And it has proven to me that the leaders of Rancho Mirage are visionaries.
So that was the 2022 festival. So before, all we could do is conceptualize and tell people what we thought it was going to be like. So a big hats off to Haley Tice and to Bill Shinskey, our curator. This becomes much more of an outdoor curated show, invitation only, so we've had lots of great feedback, and we're looking forward to growing it from there. Beyond that, we had two special awards, and we've invited, the artists are actually here today, and we're going to present to them. So we wanted to bring a little bit more highlight and a little bit more oomph to the awards each year, and we, now that our elections are in December, or in November, and then the installations are in December, we thought, oh, this would be a great opportunity to create the mayor's award and have it be one of the last things that they do while in office. So, and then we also have our Parks and Trails Commission, so our chairman here, Mr. Fred Struck, is here as well. And Parks and Trails Commission is great in helping us guide, guide the direction. So Haley kind of brought a presentation to them for this year's vision, the name change and some of the upgrades. They were very supportive and then spent a lot of time out there. So what we do is, our curator took our Parks and Trails Commission, that are all appointed by our Council, they toured all the artists, then they tallied up what they thought was the best. And, and then we, what happened this year was a fantastic story. So I have two more videos for you, so I'd like to roll the next one with artist Blake Warner.
A wonderful group of artists here in the desert, and we want to give them some attention.
The Rancho Mirage Festival of the Arts brought in artists from across the country.
An Irish artist based here in Palm Springs.
From painting landscapes to blowing glass. Different people creating different forms of art.
Beautiful day for an event like this, isn't it?
And displaying it for the community to experience.
It's amazing. It's a beautiful day. The music's great.
It's well put together. The offerings are really, really good.
Most of these artists are lifelong creators. But it was a relative newcomer to the art industry.
One-of-a-kind product.
Inspired the Rancho Mirage Parks and Trails Commission the most.
Blake Warner.
Blake Warner, truly a unique artist. I know that his term is used very often and probably overused, but this is a product that we've never seen before.
Blake Warner.
Dunes is a bit of a departure from the work that I had done previously.
A retired landscape architect turned glass shaper.
The fact that she spends months on each of these products, because it's thousands of pieces of glass, putting colors together in a creative way, really impressed us.
Impressed all five board members enough to be honored with the Parks and Trails Commission Award at this year's Ranch Mirage Festival of the Arts.
This is my first show. So to be awarded, you know, the best-in-show was, it was just overwhelming to tell you the truth.
Warner started working with glass after retiring early and wanting a creative outlook later in life.
I realized very soon that I was a retirement flunky. I didn't do well. And I met a glass artist who was incredibly inspirational to me, and it sent me on that journey.
Warner's journey from architect to artist has evolved into what she calls landscapes in glass.
My work right now is inspired by the landscapes of New Mexico. And I think in the next year, I'll be focusing on the desertsapes of the Coachella Valley and Ranch Mirage.
Winning the commission award means Warner will be a featured artist in the 2023 Ranch Mirage Festival of the Arts and have a bigger booth to display even more of her now award-winning art.
So, you know, that was unscripted in terms of that this happened to be Blake's first show that she entered. And then the Parks and Trails Commission unanimously agreed that her art was the most stunning in there. So at this moment, I'd like to invite up Fred Struck, who's our chairman of our Parks and Trails Commission, and Blake Warner to come up. And so Fred, we're going to have you present Blake, the first invitation for the 2023 Festival of the Arts ceremony. And then we also have a photo op here, so there you go.
I'd just like to thank the commissioners for acknowledging my work. There's nothing better than having someone say, you've done a good job. And also to the city of Ranch Mirage, what a wonderful opportunity for artists and new artists to express their work and their new work in a way we might not have had the opportunity before. And it's just a really awesome opportunity. I'd like to thank all of you.
So we're excited to invite, like I said, this, moving forward, this event's going to be invitation-only to artists. So when you win the commission award, you get prime placement, you get a double-sized booth, and you get the first invitation. Plus, she'll be in all the marketing materials that we typically have. We lead with some of our featured artists. There'll be a lot of marketing. So Blake, I hope you'll be in the studio quite a bit, because you'll get a lot of attention over the next 12 months. So congratulations again, and thank you for being here. And then lastly, what we did is we re-envisioned the mayor's award. And so we thought, what if we got a list of nonprofits within our community, or Ranch Mirage community? We sent that list to the mayor, and we said, is there a nonprofit that the city partners with that speaks to you? And as he was going down the list, he goes, hold on, the Children's Discovery Museum. And so in his mind, he had a charity, and then he was toured around with our curator. And he stopped at a gentleman's, an artist's booth named Tim Shockley. And this last video, I promise, will tell you the story. I broke the system with too many videos. I knew I would do that.
I think Richard voted no.
Today, we're at the Ranch Mirage Festival of the Arts, and we kind of re-imagine the mayor's award. What that consists of is the mayor walks around with our art curator and some of our fellow council members, and looked at all 32 artists, and really was looking for a piece that really stuck out to him.
I selected Tim Shockley. And Tim's work is outstanding. It is so unique that what it did, it just grabbed my attention. I could go no further than to award him the first prize. The first thing that I thought of is how somebody's mind can even think of such an article of art that it just blew my mind, really did.
You know, I feel validated. I've been making art for a long time. I mean, in many years, over 30 years. And it's just something I do with a passion and with all my heart and soul. And it feels good to be appreciated and recognized.
So how this is going to work? This artist is going to get up to a $5,000 commission to create a piece, custom work of art, or one from his existing collection for the Children's Discovery Museum.
I'm really excited. First of all, he is a great guy, and he has memories of coming to the museum with his daughter and was really excited about partnering with us. I love the fact that he is very creative, because everything we're doing right now with the reimagination is through the lens of creativity. So being able to take things that you would recognize as a normal object and creating something completely different is right up our alley at the kids' museum. What this means to the Children's Discovery Museum is it shows kids how art can be a career, first of all. That being creative and believing in yourself and finding the unusual and the usual is something that can actually be a career path. But even if it's not, it's just a way to express yourself artistically.
It creates kind of a one-last goodwill gesture that the mayor can do for the community, for the nonprofit community in Ranch Mirage, and move the Festival of the Arts program forward. So at this time, I'd like to invite up artist Tim Shockley and CEO of the Children's Discovery Museum, for the third time, Ms. Cindy Burson. And the mayor has a few comments for you, and then he's going to present your award. So please step up to the podium there. And mayor, feel free to say a few things before we do a photo op.
I will, but I'd also like to say before I start, Gabe, you and your team, when you came on board here at the city, have just blown the lid off of everything that you guys do. It is just amazing. And this festival, and I'm sure, you know, whoever has been there or not been there in the past, was unreal. It was so outstanding, what you all put together. And I'm sure next year will even be better. So congratulations first to you and your team, all of them. Wonderful job. Hi, Tim.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
How you doing?
I'm doing great. You're better by the minute. So thank you. Thank you very much. I'm very honored. I'm flattered and just thrilled to be here and to get the award. I'm super excited about what we're going to do at the museum. We've walked through it, and we had some ideas. And it's going to be great. I'm super excited. Thank you, Gabe, once again, and Haley, and Kai, and Bill Shinsky, and everyone that was involved, and the city especially. It was one of those weekends that reminds us why we live here.
Very good.
Unbelievable weekend, beautiful. Everyone had such a great time.
It was just great.
Yeah, so I thank you again.
You're welcome. Now that I gave you this award, what are you giving me?
What do I get? I'll do a very nice project in your honor.
I'm really teasing you. Thank you. Well, with that, I have a few words to say, so bear with me. And I'll try not to cry through this. I'm very honored to highlight a wonderful organization and an inspiring artist with this year's mayor's award. It makes it extra special and very emotional for me, having it to be one of the very last things I do as your mayor and my service as a council member. Tim, I'm delighted to see what creative artisticry you dream up for the thousands of visitors to our special Children's Discovery Museum that you're just talking about. I'm honored to present you with a $5,000 commission as the recipient of the 2022 Festival of the Arts Mayor's Award. So with that.
Thank you very much. Very excited.
Well, here we go. Look at this. Here you go. Hang on to that, all right? Congratulations to you, Tim. What do you have in store for him to do? Do you have any idea? You do?
So we actually toured the museum, and I showed him what our vision is for the reimagination, and then went to his studio as well. And we have probably landed on using one of his pieces using tumbleweed, making it very colorful and doing three light sconces out of tumbleweed down the ramp, the main ramp in the museum that you will see from every vantage point. But it also shows kids that you can make something extraordinary out of the ordinary when they see a piece of foliage that their parents normally swerved amiss as a piece of art. Hopefully, it will inspire them. So thank you for selecting us.
Very, very good. I'm very happy I could do that, and I wouldn't do anything else but to select you guys. And you with that tumbleweed, that's what caught my attention. He had tumbleweed in a birdcage, and it was just beautiful. So thank you, everybody, and congratulations to you, too. Congratulations to you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Ready? A little closer?
And that concludes that informational presentation, and I'm available for anything, any questions.
Anybody have any questions of what's on the docket for Gabe and his illustrious Darrell Zanick group? Cecil B. DeMille, anything?
Gabe, where are you going to cash that check? Run down to your local bank?
Any bank in Ranch Mirage, yeah. It's city funds, so it'll cash.
Okay, I think that we are all the way down to city clerk public comments. Anybody? Kristi?
Okay, so now's the time for anyone who has comments on this item. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? And if you are participating remotely, you would press star nine or raise hand on Zoom. One moment. And no speakers on Zoom.
Very good. That closes that part of our reports. And we are not having any closed session. So we are moving on to say, Iris, last goodbye. Go ahead.
Well, thank you so much. There aren't many words that can truly express the joy I have felt working on the council for 11 years and five months, just to be exact. Everybody who serves our city, whether it's at the yard, or in our library, or on the dais, or in the back offices, they have all contributed to our lives as council members. They are the ones who make our lives easier. We make recommendations sometimes, but they are the ones who implement them. They are the ones who come to our aid. They are ones who answer our questions. They are the ones who make our suggestions work in every capacity. All of our commissioners play a big part and give their suggestions. And they're all appreciated, and they're all listened to. But no one listens as well as our staff, our city manager, our city attorney, everybody who is the head of a department. Kristi, with her immeasurable efforts. Their doors are always open, unlike most other cities, where the council members have to go through a city manager or go through the mayor. Ranch Mirage has created an effortless way of reaching our staff members, picking up a telephone, knocking on their door, just gliding into their office and having a seat. It has been an amazing experience. I know the new council members will enjoy it as well. And when you can express yourself and not feel that you will be ignored or overlooked, that's all that a council member can really want, as well as giving their input and having it taken seriously. And I thank everyone. You've just been amazing. You've been welcoming every time we're at your door. And I can't thank you enough for everything you do for us and for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. And I will say, ditto, ditto, you put it well. There's not much I can add to that. That's why I wanted to go first with it. You know, I was just reminiscing and thinking, when coming up to this council and sitting in these big chairs, it didn't happen overnight that I knew what to do or how to handle things or situations or projects or looking at both sides. It really took everybody on the council that was with me then and is with me now, and the staff, like Iris said. It was a real learning, really learning project. You just don't walk into it. So I listened to everybody and made my mistakes, and they were all there to hold my hand. And I wish all of you that have come forward, come forward, remembering you're here for the city of Ranch Mirage. You're here for the future. You have a trust that was put in your hands. And look at it that way of what you can do for this city. It's not here to embellish ourselves, but to do the right thing for this city and to be proud to know that years down the road that you had a part in the footprint of Ranch Mirage. I thank you all, everybody. Thank you. And we are adjourned.